Get started. My name is Sina Neshad and I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Planning and Zoning, and I welcome you along with my fellow commissioners. If you would call the roll, please.
Chairman Neshad.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Present.
Mr. Jabar.
Present.
Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Mr. Makin.
Here.
Mr. Noyola.
Here.
Mr. Pate.
Here.
And Commissioner Carrisi.
Here.
Great. As we all count our blessings every day in this great country of ours, I hope that you guys have the people of Ukraine in your thoughts and prayers and donate to your favorite charity that could help them. Thank you. With that said, we have sent the minutes of the last meeting. I would entertain a motion and/or any suggestion for changes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion and entertain that we approve the minutes for February 21, 2022.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. We're going to start our first regular meeting. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon. The first and only item on the regular agenda item is PZ 2022-60, which is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of Faith Estates, Section 1, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The preliminary plat of Faith Estates was first approved in September of 2007 and was again approved in March of 2019. The two years allowed for development of the subdivision has now passed and therefore Faust Engineering and Surveying has once again requested preliminary plat approval of Faith Estates, Section 1. The development is located south of Plant Road and west of Helbig Road. The 9.72 acre development is a 40 lot residential, single-family residential lot subdivision in an RS zone. The proposed streets will have 60 foot of right-of-way. Grace Lane and Peace Street will have 38 feet of pavement widths and Favor Street will have 28 feet of pavement widths. Grace Lane and Favor Street will access Plant Road. Water and sewer will be provided by extension of city utilities. Let me go ahead and show you the layout of the preliminary plat. And again, this was, as mentioned, was approved back in 2007. And the way the code works is the preliminary plat are basically valid for two years, and if the development doesn't commence, then the plat expires. And so it's come back to you before, now this is a third time. So this is the overall master plan of the preliminary plat. And if you look at the top, it's shaded in gray. That's the Section 1. And this is a zoom in of the Section 1. You can see the, this is connecting to Plant Road at the north. And so in review of the subdivision, I should point out that Section 26.03.004 of the city ordinances states that when planting, sidewalks shall be installed prior to the final building inspections. If the lot is not developed within five years of the recordation of the final plat, the current property owner shall construct sidewalks. And so sidewalks will need to be shown on the plat, and a note will need to be placed on the final plat stating that the sidewalk should be constructed, shall be constructed rather, by the current property owner if not, if the lots are not developed within the five years. So we would ask for that note on the plat. And furthermore, Section 26.03.008-2 of the city ordinances states that streetlights shall be installed at all intersections and at additional locations not less than 200 feet apart. Locations shall be designated so as to provide an average separation of approximately 250 feet. And several of the streetlights shown on the preliminary plat are shown less than 200 feet apart. Should point out also, Grace Lane will extend more than 150 feet beyond Favor Street, and as such, a temporary cul-de-sac would be required. And if you look on your... So if you look here, basically to the... The first street coming off of Plant Road, again, because this is only a single unit, we will need to have a temporary cul-de-sac there. And then finally, Section 26.03.01, Section 2, states that land which the planning commission finds to be unsuitable for subdivision or development due to flooding improper drainage shall not be subdivided or developed unless adequate methods are formulated by the developer and approved by the planning commission that will solve the drainage problems created by the unsuitable land conditions. Due to the improper drainage at this site, Drainage District 6 is requiring that a temporary ditch will need to be constructed in a private drainage easement which delivers runoff to the DD6 ditch to the south. A storm drain tie-in permit will be required with DD6 at the outfall adhering to all DD6 requirements. In addition, water and sewer availability in this area may not be adequate to serve the entire conceptual Faith Estates subdivision. Water utilities will require a water and sewer capacity analysis prior to acceptance of the subdivision. Based on that, city staff is recommending approval of this preliminary subdivision subject to the following conditions. Number one, sidewalks must be shown. Number two, adjust streetlights to meet city ordinance requirements. Number three, temporary cul-de-sac must be installed at the end of Grace Lane. Number four, a temporary ditch will need to be constructed in a private drainage easement which delivers runoff to the DD6 ditch to the south. Storm drain tie-in permit will be required with DD6 at the outfall adhering to DD6 requirements. Number five, provide a water and sewer capacity analysis of the area showing they are sufficient for the entire Faith Estates development. And then finally, fire hydrants required at a maximum of 500 feet between hydrants. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
With the, in regard with the temporary ditch, there are plans for additional lots where the temporary ditch is, right?
Correct.
What happens then? Because you can dispose of your water onto the next property.
Right. So there is a ditch running parallel to the development here. And if you look, this is the overall master plan. And so what we're requesting is that a temporary ditch be provided for the initial units, and then as the future units are developed, if you see there is a detention pond shown there, triangular shape, kind of to the southeast there. And so that would be the permanent detention facility.
Well, how is the water going to get there if you have other lots constructed?
Well, they would have to have a connected permitted outfall to that ditch, and that's what they would have to work with DD6 to permit.
I understand that, but if there are other residential lots built there, how are you going to get? That's my question. I don't want to lead these people into going on and then all of a sudden they can't do anything else. That needs to be piped, and if it's going to be piped, it'd be under somebody else's property.
Yeah, and I believe the applicant, the engineer, should be in the audience, and they could probably better answer that.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Well, Mr. Faust, are you here? You're hiding, right? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Faust. I'm at Faust Engineering and Surveying. Our address is 5550 East Tex Freeway, Suite O, in the windy city of Beaumont, Texas, 77708. Your question again?
Richard, on the top of that property, that's where your first section is, and then they're going to require a... Where is the north arrow on this drawing? Is north on the top, Richard?
North is up.
Okay. So on the south of your first subdivision, they're asking for a temporary ditch. What's going to happen when the next subdivision is ready to be built?
That temporary ditch will be piped, and we will start building detention pond as needed in order to compensate for the drainage.
Good. I agree with that, but that temporary pipe is going to be under the road because it's not going to go under everybody else's property?
No, sir. It'll line up with the road.
Okay.
And we will place pipe in it as we further, do a further development. So we are cutting the temporary ditch in the area where the pipe will be placed as we proceed with the development.
So the inlets would be between the two properties, and then it's going to run all the way along the property and come down the streets, right?
Which area are we speaking about?
South of where you're constructing your first subdivision.
Okay.
Where the temporary ditch is shown.
Yes.
It's going to be a good-sized pipe, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As long as everybody understands that. Any other questions for Mr. Faust?
Yes, I have a question. Are you all planning to adhere to all of the conditions that are required?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, what's a good-sized pipe?
Richard, you're the civil guy.
Yes. Probably a 36 Ralph hand is what I guess.
It's going to be expensive. Okay, great. You have, you agreed to all the requirements, and there's no public hearing required for this guy. So thank you very much, Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
Great. We've heard from the city staff and also the applicant, and he does understand the requirements of the city, and he does understand the future pipe that needs to be there. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. This concludes our regular item agenda, and then now we're going to go to the joint meeting with the Honorable Mayor leading us into the next one.
Thank you. Angela Colby.
Mayor Mutan.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Turner absent. Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
And Councilmember Durio.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning, Division, and Public City Council. Today will be the only day that you will have the opportunity to review any item that is presented today or presented to the council within the next two weeks of Beaumont. If you have anything that you would like to discuss, we'd like your interest to make your mention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Mr. Boone, we're going to get started with the only case we have, PZ 2022-64.
Yes, sir. Item PZ 2022-64 is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a middle school and high school in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, at 6490 Phelan Boulevard. Harmony Schools is requesting a specific use permit to allow a middle school and high school at this location. Plans are to build a 100,000 square-foot building to house a new secondary school with 750 students and 100 staff. The campus is expected to function similar to a traditional public school in terms of hours of operation. And let me go ahead and show you the slides. You can see here, this is the location outlined in red. The shopping center is to the bottom of the screen to the south towards Phelan. Under where it says GCMD, that's where the, well, I think the movie theater was there at one time, is now a church. But this is the property in question. And this is the proposed site plan. Again, you can see the new school there with the football soccer field to the north, the parking. And you can see there with the circulation pattern proposed for cars, especially notice to the right side of your screen or to the east, the drop-off and pickup aisles. And again, this is just an aerial view of the property in question. And this is a photograph of the subject property. View to the east. View to the southeast. And again, if you notice, this is, says to the southeast, but just to orient you in terms of the site, this is going to be on the east side of the shopping center looking south towards Phelan Boulevard. And this is a view within the shopping center looking, actually looking north from Phelan. Also looking northwest from Phelan. And this is a view to the south. So again, if you're in the shopping center, this is, I think there used to be a bar, Local was there. There was, this is kind of on that western side of that portion of the shopping center. A view to the west. And so, in review of the application, and let me go ahead and put the site plan back A couple comments we've received from engineering and traffic is a concern for traffic, and the comments are that due to the traffic generated by the proposed development, they're requesting a left-turn bay median cut will need to be provided by the developer for eastbound traffic on Phelan Boulevard. In addition, due to the extent of the development, there's a request for drainage calculations along with a traffic impact analysis, which will need to be provided along with a permit application demonstrating that the proposed development would have no negative impact on the surrounding area. In addition, the submitted site plan appears to include drainage detention in the Drainage District 6 easement. Detention would not be allowed in that easement. As part of the requirements of the city's landscaping ordinance, the proposed school will be adjacent to residentially zoned properties to the northeast and west. Although trees are shown along the north and west property lines, they do not meet ordinance requirements. Per city ordinance, an eight-foot tall wood or masonry privacy fence and a 10-foot wide landscape buffer is required along any property lines abutting residential. And the landscape buffer should have one Class A or two Class B trees for every 25 linear feet of property. And for the council's benefit, or commission's benefit, we did send out 74 notices to area property owners. We've received zero in favor. We've received two in opposition. One is from a Vivian Gore address at 555 Parsons, and they simply state they're opposed to the application. The second is a James Rhodes from 535 Parsons, which I believe is the street to the east behind this development, to the east. And their comment is concerned about drainage and traffic congestion behind shopping center. Area does not seem large enough to support the amount of traffic. Also concerned about possible sports events and lighting. However, based on the application in question, staff is recommending approval of this application subject to the following conditions. Number one, provide drainage calculations showing no negative impact. Adequate detention volume must be incorporated which will maintain existing conditions of runoff. The Drainage District 6 easement on the east side of the property may not be used for detention. And if you recall that, the photograph of the oak trees lining the fence line, that's the DD6 easement. Condition number two is provide a left-turn bay median cut for the eastbound traffic on Phelan Boulevard. Number three, provide a traffic analysis, analysis showing no significant negative impact. And then finally, number four is provide landscaping to meet city ordinance requirements. But based on that, are there any questions of staff?
The lighting was not your concern, that was one of the complaints, right?
Yes, sir. So that was one of the concerns raised by a neighbor. And we have in the past added a condition regarding, typically, the condition is worded similar to providing directional lighting in order to minimize the negative impact on, you know, surrounding uses, something to that effect. So that could be added as a condition.
Chris, can you show the picture again of where this backs up to the neighborhood?
So if you look, Phelan is just out of the frame to the bottom or the south there. And then you can see we had, as mentioned, two addresses on Parsons Drive, which is to the east, the yellow lots to the east.
Sorry, the one I wanted to see was the trees.
Okay, just the photograph of the trees?
Right.
You want to see, okay. So here's the photograph.
Okay.
Right there.
And you said that doesn't meet the requirements, those trees. So they'll have to have the additional, correct?
Well, we won't, no, we won't require the trees to be cut down, no, on this side. Now, on other, on other sides, there are some trees, but they're, they're not sufficient. But these, these would count towards the tree buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris?
Yes. By this being a junior high and high school, would there be bus traffic for this?
I would defer to the applicant. I don't believe so, but I would let them answer that. And again, there, I think to your point, there's, there are still some questions about the traffic management, and that is why we're recommending the condition for the traffic study, just so we can have an engineer look at it to see what is the impact going to be, and is it going to be an issue. But I think the applicant could answer the question on the buses.
And on, on that design that you had, there was a small strip that went out all the way to almost After Street. Is that just parking, or what was that the strip for? On the, this particular...
Oh, that's just part of the property. And I think that's part of that DD6 easement. So I think it's originally related to drainage. But in terms of their proposed plan, I don't believe they're proposing to really use it.
To use it, okay.
I have a question about, is there going to be a band and noise when they have their football games, and how will that affect the neighborhoods and...
Yeah. I would, I would ask the applicant that, but I would, you know, with it being a school, I would assume that would all be part of it, yes.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you. And the applicant? Great. Good afternoon. Could you please come up and state your name and address, and also any additional information you might have for us, and address some of the comments that has been made?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll share.
My name is Jeff Payne, and I'm the Outreach and Communications Director at the school that we currently have here in Beaumont. It's located on Calder Avenue, Harmony Public School, Harmony Science Academy there, where we have a population of almost 600 students that we get on and off to that campus rather quickly in the morning and in the afternoon with no bus service. I'm not sure whether or not we're going to have bus service then or not, but I do want to just speak in advocacy of the kind of campus that we are and what we provide and offer to the community, if that's okay.
Forgive me, I forgot to mention you have three minutes, and we'd love to hear you.
Okay, super. So you can see most of our information is, is on this one, two-page sheet, front and back, that I've handed you. But I just want to say that our school is really kind of the unsung educational hero of your city. We're a school that has appeared every year that I've been there, the last 10 years, on the U.S. News &amp; World Report list of top high schools in America. And we have an amazing success story working with the same student populations that all of the other schools in town work with. All of the lunches are now free, as you know, in the state of Texas, but if they weren't, we have a student population that would qualify for free or reduced lunch, probably up to 60% of our population at any one time. And we've had that for years, and yet we have 100% of our kids accepted to college. Every one of our graduating seniors goes to college, and all of our kids graduate. It's really an amazing success story. I was content to just be pastoring my church 10 years ago when I went to the school. I knew I had to be a part of what was going on there. And while I continue to pastor the church, my heart and soul was also part of the mission and ministry of this school, because educationally, what it provides for our community is unparalleled, really. And it's not just because, you know, we have some sort of a secret sauce that no one else has, but it's because we insist upon a culture that produces that kind of excellence and outcome. You can see, among other things, that 100 volunteer hours are given by all of our students before they can graduate. They give those hours their junior and senior years. And they work in places all over this city and helping at the food bank. And as a matter of fact, we were awarded with the number one award from the Southeast Texas Food Bank last year, as the organization that gave the most to that organization and group. So our kids develop a heart and a passion for this city. And a lot of them stay in this city and enter STEM fields and careers, and some of them go off and become doctors and lawyers and other important people in service to other communities. But a lot of them stay right here. And I think it's an important thing for the council and the commission to know that this school is doing a great work that they need to be supportive of if at all possible. Thank you.
All right. So let me, do you have any information on the lighting, number one?
No, and I don't think...
Number two, the band and the noise? Anybody with you that can address that?
Can you address a band or noise? I know I live near Sally Curtis, and we hear it over on Carnation Drive when they're playing baseball. So I assume if you live near there, you might hear some noise. But we don't have, at this point in time, we don't have a marching band, and we're principally a STEM college preparatory academy.
Good. And the lighting is something I'm sure somebody can address during the design process. That shouldn't be all that difficult. Any other questions for the gentleman? You guys are a neighbor of us on Calder, and I'll tell you, it's a pleasure having, having those kids over there.
Thank you, sir.
It's been very peaceful, so.
We have a peaceful campus by the grace of God. So, thank you.
No other questions, right?
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you. Mr. Payne, I want to thank you for your contributions and your service and your work to the great school of Harmony. As a retired secondary schools and university professor, I, one of the things I enjoyed was going out to Harmony and sitting down with those students and recruiting them into Lamar University as well as LIT. Well, you're still welcome to come back over and talk to them some more. We'd love to have you. Thank you so much for your work, sir.
Thank you. Now, we're going to open the floor for public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is David Bradley, and I office here in Beaumont at 2165 North Street. I come to you and maybe a little infomercial on charter schools for those that may be a little curious about it. I served for 22 years in a position much like y'all, volunteering my time in the Texas State Board of Education. In 1985, the legislature authorized the issuance of charter schools, and George Bush was... And George Bush was governor at the time. And in nineteen ninety-five, the first fifteen charters were authorized by the state Board of Education. And then every year subsequent to that, additional charters were issued. Today, there are over three hundred individual charter organizations operating in Texas. Harmony is one of the largest. They have over twenty thousand students currently on almost forty campuses across the state. You want to talk about school choice? We have public school choice with charters. School choice is limited. If you're willing to pay your property taxes and tuition, you have school choice. If you want to relocate your home, you have school choice. You can pick the community you want to live in. And sometimes it depends on which side of the railroad tracks you're going to live as to where your kid might go to school. But charter schools were born out of a need to provide school choice for families that were in communities either by loyalty or by economics, had their kids zoned to possibly a failing school by virtue of their zip code. And charter schools have met that need. Charter schools are public schools. If you'll notice in the name, it's Harmony Public Schools. They're privately operated, but they're publicly funded by the state. Amazingly, they're pretty efficient. They're funded now only about eighty-five to ninety percent of what we spend in public education. And they even pay their own facility cost out of their operating budgets. They don't tax. They don't get bond money. So they're doing a great job. Harmony has been about twenty years now, and I remember the first application that they brought to my committee. And there were five Turkish gentlemen there, and their accents was as thick as Turkish coffee. It was an interesting conversation, but it generated out of the need, they were graduate students at Texas A&amp;M, one of the finest universities we have in Texas. But they saw a need in their kids and in their community of not getting the reading, writing, and arithmetic that would make them successful in higher education. And they opened up their first campus in, was that southwest Houston? And it was in a small vacated Jewish synagogue. And they even used the community center for their athletics. They had less than two hundred students, and that was their humble beginning. And today, they're one of the premier public charter schools we have here in Texas. So we really appreciate an opportunity to expand the program here in Beaumont. They're going to add another hundred, seven hundred and fifty seats for parents that want to get their kids into a top-quality education. So thank you very much for your attention, for your questions, and it's going to be a good day for Beaumont.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Sandra Nelson, and I've had the pleasure of working for Harmony-
Your address, please.
Forty-fifty-five Calder. I've had the pleasure of working with Harmony Science Academy for ten years. And I, my role there, I am the Dean of College Counselor. And just to reiterate some of the stuff that Mr. Payne actually said, uh, we in fact do have a hundred percent graduation rate and a ninety-nine percent college acceptance rate. And this is every year that I've actually been there, so I can definitely attest to that. Um, one of the things that I do want to share with you is the fact that being a counselor comes with both, uh, challenges as well as rewards, like any other job. But two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend a ceremony at Lamar University where one of our alumnus actually, uh, was in his second year of, uh, a pre-med major. And they recognized the young man for, um, his great abilities and his skills and knowledge in order to go and to conduct research in Canada this summer. And the research is, um, going to be an in-depth research on unknown proteins regarding autophagy, which is actually dealing with cancer cells. Great ceremony. I was extremely proud to be a part of it, and these are the students that we are producing. These are the, the things that we strive for. And, uh, we prepare our students for excellence so they can thrive and go out in the world and make the difference. So I just want to convey to you all that Harmony is a great place. It's a great place to work, and it's a great place to send your students. So, um, please, or your kids, rather, not your students. So please, uh, take into consideration that it will definitely bring a lot of, um, great things to Beaumont, uh, the new campus, if you all see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Young lady, good afternoon. If you would please state your name and address for the record, and we'll be happy to hear you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Gore. I live at five thirty-five Parson Drive. I was one of the people that submitted a vote against it. Um, I have several concerns about this. Number one being drainage. As you know, Beaumont flooded multiple times from different tropical storms, hurricanes, and just regular heavy rainfall as we're going to get. I know that the drainage maps have not been updated yet, even though the NOAA Atlas fourteen rainfall statistics were updated in two thousand and eighteen. I get that that's going to take some time. But given that we've already had the north end of Parson Drive flood during Harvey, as well as, I want to say during Amelda, and we had people flood on Afton and Ivanhoe, I think it's a very valid concern that people want to know if this is going to impact our drainage or not. And I know DD six is doing the best they can to resolve that, but obviously it's going to take time because everywhere around Beaumont needs to have their drainage resolved. Um, something else I want to bring to your attention is the number of bars that they have in the shopping center. How is it going to work with middle school students and high school students getting out right when the bars and everything open up? Is there going to be some kind of security there? Are they going to be instructed to stay out of, like, the bars, not harass them? What's, what's the plan for this? Because I know I spoke to a couple of the bar managers, and they were a little concerned about that as well. I mean, back when Little Woodrose opened up, there were issues with fighting in the parking lot, and they had to hire, um, off-duty security officers there. As far as I know, there hasn't really been much of an issue now, but who knows what's going to be going forward? I don't know if they still hire off-duty police officers. Um, also, in terms of the traffic going through there, that area is also used by the deliveries as well as the garbage trucks that pick up the dumpsters that are behind the buildings. Those trucks run approximately seven to nine AM. It's kind of a give and take as exactly what time it's going to be, but that would normally be, I would think, when people are dropping their kids off for school. At least whenever I was in school, it was like a, you know, seven thirty, eight AM start. So I would assume there's going to be quite a bit of traffic, and I'm wondering how that's going to work, having the garbage trucks trying to back up, pick up dumpsters. At the same time, there's all this traffic trying to go through. Um, my next point would be that the trees shown in the photograph, where you guys, where it was facing, um, I want to say, south, most of those trees are not actually part of this property. That's actually part of the Colonnades Center. So that can actually be counted towards our landscaping, as far as I know. Um, let's see. Oh, and the lighting. I had some concerns about that because we did have some issues with the lights from Little Woodrose shining in my bedroom window.
Your time is over, yeah. I would make a motion to give the lady another two minutes so she can finish.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
There's a motion, a second. All agree? Say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, so like I was saying, the lighting has been an issue in the past, uh, with Little Woodrose. They had some lighting on the back of the building that showed that was lighting right into my window. I sent some pictures to the owners. They resolved it, but, you know, they did replace their lighting recently. That's, um, the multi-light up in the sky one. I don't know exactly what the name is for it, but that is exceedingly bright. I'm not going to complain, though, because it keeps, um, people from doing things we would rather them not do behind those buildings. So that's, that's nice. But, um, the imagining there being stadium lighting or additional school lighting, I think that's probably going to be a concern. And honestly, the only reason why I'm the only person up here versus anyone else on the street, a majority of the people that live on the north end of Parson Drive are renters. Also, a lot of the people that live on Ivanhoe and Afton are renters. So they probably have no idea because this is all gone to the property owner's mailbox. They probably have no clue what's going on. I know of at least five other people on the street that actually are, uh, homeowners, but they all live on the south end. So the north end has no clue, none whatsoever. Um, let's see. Oh, next question is exactly how are they going to fit seven hundred and fifty cars, if they have that many students, down that little access point during, let's say, three to four o'clock traffic on, let's say, a Friday when everybody is off from work? From what I understood, talking to the bar, um, managers, that's exactly when Phelan starts backing up pretty heavily with all the traffic of people coming, um, wanting to go to the bars that are in that area, Mackenzie's, The West, Little Woodrose, Facetti's, plus the new restaurants that have opened up there, like JW's Patio. How exactly is that going to work? Because what I'm foreseeing is a whole lot of traffic going down behind my back fence, and there being so much traffic that people probably won't really be able to even get out of Peyton to even turn onto Phelan.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
Hello, I'm Mike Albanese. I, um, I live in Beaumont, eighteen fifty Thomas Road. I own the retail project in front of this proposed development. And I do understand the, the concerns. Obviously, this is something that we spent a lot of time on. And, uh, really, as we got to know, uh, the folks at Harmony and, and what their proposal was, and we've been talking about this for a long time, um, we would be, you know, probably the most commercially affected by this. I understand the, the personal, um, concerns that the, um, the lady just had. And so I would like to speak to some of that and the way, and how we've worked through this. We do support the project. Uh, we support it a hundred percent. We, uh, we, like I said, we spent a lot of time on this. We've talked to them about access and, uh, and I do think what the city is proposing is not unreasonable as far as drainage. Uh, obviously, that's something that we're all concerned about. Nobody wants, uh, and, and I think, um, we know the folks at DD six and they do a great job, and I think, I think what your proposal is there is, makes a lot of sense. As far as traffic, a traffic study, I think will give you a lot of those answers. We've done that. Uh, you're not really going to put seven hundred and fifty cars in there. I think there'll be a lot of drop-off, from what I understand, uh, with, especially with the middle school, the kids that aren't driving, um, and, uh, and such. There will be some access. We are going to allow, uh, access behind, is the, what the, um, the conversation with us was, behind the shopping center. Got to realize, we've got quite a bit of room back there. The picture may or may not have shown it. You're welcome to come visit out there. We can show you. We can show you a survey. It's, it's about eighty-one feet from the, the fence to the, uh, to our property. Uh, and there, there have been concerns. We've talked to our tenants and explained to them how we're going to allow access for their delivery trucks at all times and still have rows of traffic where they could go, come and go, um, to, to access. Even so, even if a, a delivery truck shows up, you know, seven o'clock in the morning or seven thirty or eight o'clock, whenever schools, uh, uh, doing their part to, or when, then when kids are going on their way to school, uh, that we can, we can accommodate, uh, deliveries at that time. And so we're very comfortable with that and the amount of room that we have and the ability that we have to do that. Uh, so drainage, traffic, uh, the, uh, access, uh, we're comfortable with taking deliveries. Uh, as far as, uh, the lighting, again, I think we, we do enough of this development all over the country that I think directional lighting hopefully would, uh, would, would help with that. No one wants stadium light shining in their, their homes, and we certainly understand that. And, and we've tried to be good neighbors. We've not owned this shopping center, um, for very long. We've, uh, we've, we've owned it, uh, just for, I don't know, over, a little over a year or whatever. It's, you know, I've lost track. Maybe it was the end of twenty twenty. Um, and we started the renovations, and we're doing lots of work, and we're trying to improve it. Um, we are not doing, um, any new deals with, uh, with bars, you know, and so I think that that's okay. I understand that any, anybody or restaurant that we do business, that we allow in the shopping center-
Your time is over, so I would make a motion to, uh, give him another two minutes of time. Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you very much. So what, anything that we do will be restaurant slash, you know, they may, they may serve alcohol, but it'll be restaurant, hopefully family-friendly, those kinds of things. And so we are working really hard, and we are working with, um, uh, the Beaumont Police Department. We've met on site several times and, and how important this is for us to make this, uh, a safe shopping, eating environment, uh, entertainment environment for, um, for the people that, that choose to come here. And so that's very, very important to us. So I want to speak as the largest property owner right here in front of the property and, uh, that we are in support of, of this moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? All right, we had, uh, some negative, uh, comments from, uh, one of the neighbors. And if you would, please, uh, you have the opportunity to address that if you like, or, uh, if not, we just add them to our conditions. So we'd be happy to hear you. Either one of you guys? You're fine. The negative impact was the, was the lighting, and also the traffic is going, traffic is already accounted for. Drainage is already accounted for.
Sound.
And, I'm sorry?
The sound.
The sound.
Sound.
Traffic and sound.
I'm not sure how you handle the, the sound, but, uh, there are going to be kids and they're going to make noise. As a matter of fact, they make all sorts of noise at my office, and, and I'll be honest with you, it's a pleasure listening to little kids playing. So, uh-
My counterargument on that would be, there's a bar with an outside sound already, so I don't see it affecting it as much if they're not going to have a marching band. So that's one thing I would like to point out.
I believe the gentleman said they, they are a STEM col, uh, school, and they don't have a concentration on band, so that, that doesn't, uh, probably would not come into the equation. Uh, we have the lighting, uh, Mr. Boone, and, uh, you can just draft whatever you can on, on to make sure that the, the noise level would not be, uh, hindrance to the neighborhood.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that we, um, again, staff recommends a fifth condition, that the lighting be designed such to minimize impact on surrounding residential properties.
That's probably a normal thing that they do anyway. All right. So, uh, we have heard from the staff, we heard from the applicant, and also some supporters and one of the neighbors. Uh, we added another condition to the, uh, to the documents. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with five to seven conditions.
Second.
Uh, there is not seven conditions.
Just, just the five.
There's five.
With five conditions.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
And, uh, all in favor say, oh, I'm sorry. Any, any discussion?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to kind of throw this out there, Chris, for consideration. I probably don't know what I'm talking about, but when the lady, uh, talked about security, uh, is that something that can be incorporated as a condition of them to provide adequate security for the safety of the children?
So, in the past, for some uses, typically their bars, uh, drinking places, in the past, we have added conditions where they provide adequate security. But usually those have been related to, like I said, drinking places. So I would assume that the, the school is, you know, they're subject to state regulations in terms of operating a school, and I'm sure they're interested in the protection of the, you know, their, their students and, and staff. And so I, I, I would hesitate to recommend as a condition because again, at the end of the day, staff has to enforce that somehow, so.
Uh, I agree with Chris. I, I'm sure Harmony has the best interest in protecting their own kids. That's detrimental to their survival, so, uh, and I don't believe that we're going to have very many drunk kids going in the parking lot over there, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to, uh, make a comment about, uh, Harmony, and I'd like to applaud them for what they're doing with the, with the school and fostering education. But I also think that we will be able to, the city will be able to mitigate any, any situation that may arise for the sake of, again, fostering education.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from anybody?
I don't want to make a comment, you know, time to time, uh, within my church and other, uh, community members, they wanted to request and see if they can send their kids. But they have a, a wonderful system where it doesn't matter what your income is and, and correct me if I'm wrong, in which your grades are, they're giving everybody equal opportunity. And I tried to get a couple of kids in. I couldn't do it, even though I know the principal and know everybody. But what you guys do and giving everybody equal opportunity, we appreciate you all.
We use a laundry system, and our waiting is just quite long.
Now, I wanted to add about the band and the noise. Uh, I know you, Jeff Payne, and I know your music background, and I hope y'all do one day have the music. And I know that that will be addressed if there is noise, but with your music background, I hope y'all- And I know that that will be addressed if there is noise, but with your music background, I hope y'all do. Harmony.
This was going very well before you started.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're not having a band right now. Anybody else wants to create problems? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. Uh, we are done with our work, so you can send us home.